I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call.
Ms. Hutchins, absent. Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rollis-Purgeon?
Here.
Mr. Kleindt, absent.
Dana, as you know, has been out ill for a while, and we send our best to you, Dana. And the mayor is out this evening. He is not feeling well either. I understand. This evening for our flag salute, which will be led by Ms. Rollis-Purgeon.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our invocation this evening will be brought to us by Reverend Armand Kref from the Church of St. Paul in the Desert. Good evening and welcome.
Hello, how are you, Ron? It's good to see you. Let us pray. God of eternal and changeless wisdom, we thank you for gathering us this evening as we seek the common good for our town. Open our hearts to the charge laid upon us by the people. Open our ears to their desires. Open our minds to seek your guidance. Open our lips to speak out for justice and equality. Open our eyes' hands to receive the bounty of your blessing. This we ask in your many names. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This evening, we have a presentation and swearing-in of police officer Arthur Enderly. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'd like to introduce to you our newest police officer, Arthur Enderly. Stand right up there. Turn around, face there, you go. He's a new addition to our police department. He's part of the Homeland Security. As you know, we have four police officers that are currently authorized at the airport. We're going to be adding an additional two. And as you know, of these six officers, they're not paid out of our general fund, but they're compensated by the federal government, and he's going to be part of the new security at the airport. A little background on Officer Enderly. He grew up as a military brat, living in various states and countries. Interestingly, he put himself through our local police academy. He attended what's called the modular training, which means he worked full-time, maintained a family, and went to the police academy part-time at College of the Desert. I know he's going to be a great police officer because I taught him a few of his classes. Right, officer?
Yes.
Good answer. Officer Enderly is married, he has four children, and tonight in the audience, I'd like to introduce his wife, Margaret, Margaret, and his daughter, Ashley, who's 24-years-old.
Eight.
Eight years old. And he has his parents, Arthur and Herlinda. Brother Ronald is here as well. Okay, let's begin with the swearing-in. If you could turn around, face me, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well, well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you, and you have our newest police officer sworn in. Also, as part of our presentation, we have Mike McCullough. He is the executive director with the 100 Club. The 100 Club has been instrumental in providing bulletproof vests to our police department, and he's going to do a brief presentation here.
My vest?
No, he's not. He's going to give him a vest.
My vest is empty, it's a frost.
He's wearing his vest. That's a... Thank you, council.
I leave you with Commander Hall while we go across the street.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you, chief, for the presentation. Well, now I have our report, the posting of the agenda by the city clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday, October the 10th. The council was given tonight some additional materials. Those materials in your yellow folder marked for public hearing concern items 5, 6, and 7. You were faxed the cover sheet earlier today. In addition, in the other yellow folder that you have, you have a revised resolution regarding item 10.
Closed session report to the attorney.
Yes, the council and agency meant in closed session. The items on the agenda: real property negotiations for the agency with VIP Motors. We gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving Mark Gabe, we gave a... That item was not discussed. Litigation matters, real property matters for the city of Palm Springs, real property negotiations with Desert Water Agency, the Walter Family Partnership, and 115 acres north of Trambu Road. None of those items were discussed. The litigation matter involving Eldorado Mobile Home, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The item involving Center for Biological Diversity, gave a status report, no action was taken. Exposure to litigation in two cases, we gave a status report, no action was taken. We did not discuss initiation of litigation.
The Housing Authority, the Financing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, and Community Redevelopment Agency tonight have no business, and we will move to public comments. You'll have three minutes, anyone wishing to speak on matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. I have one card tonight, and that is it. Sweet tech. Good evening, Ed. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members. I stand before you once again requesting that you consider allocating funds for a special event to come into Palm Springs in September 2004. That event is the Senior Softball World Series that has taken place in the city of Palm Springs in 1995 and 1998. The organizer is requesting that we take a look, and hopefully you can put it on a study session coming up, at the possibility of allocating funds. This particular organization has brought us 3,700-room nights in 1998, 4,300-room nights in 1995, which had a TOT value to the city of approximately $23,000 to $27,000 during those two years, each year. It's interesting, I've got this letter here, I'm not going to go through the whole letter, I just wanted to try to see if we can get ourselves onto the study session for next week to discuss this. The Convention Center will be in full-blown expansion by September of next year. There is only one citywide convention that is presently booked at the Convention Center, that's the Pacific Society of Orthodontists, representing 3,000-room nights. An average for September in room nights from the Convention Center is generally about 5,000-room nights, so we're going to be a little light in our compression in the city for next year. Page 2 has given a little bit of history on the event, and actually, the TOT from 1998 is represented there. I do have pledges from the Riviera Resort, the Ramada Resort, and other sources equalling the fund, the number that's put in front of you there. And our request to the city is blank. I think my administrative assistant was playing games with me because I looked at that and thought to myself, what happened here? But we would put that before you at study session of next year, or next week, I'm sorry. And we have offered to put a little bit of it in 2003, '04 budget, and some of it in the 2004 and '05 budget. So, in a nutshell, $47,000 in revenue to the city. The allocation of funds to the organization is less than that, so it is a better-than-break-even situation for the city, and we will present that next week at study session, if you allow us to. So, thank you for your time.
And thank you. If you please come forward, give your name to the city clerk. You'll have three minutes. Good evening and welcome.
My name is H.L. Smith. I live at 138 Sage Drive, Palm Springs. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, never in my wildest dream would I ever think that I would come before this body to speak. But here I am. My income is strictly Social Security, and within six months, I will be paying 75% of my total income to Mr. Goldstein for rent. Back in July, this council approved an agreement with Mr. Goldstein regarding the conversion of Eldorado to a residentially-owned condominium park, if you could afford to buy. At that time, you might have thought that the Eldorado fiasco would be over, and you would not have to worry about the seniors in that park anymore. But you're wrong. This man has set a precedent within this area that tells all other multiple complex landlords that they can apply for a conversion and get their complex out from under rent control. This conversion was a sham at the beginning, it will be a sham at the end, but it took smart people to see that. I give fair warning to all seniors living under rent control in Palm Springs, be on your guard. Rent control was broken by Mr. Goldstein, and your landlord can do the same. That piece of legislation called rent control is just a piece of paper that can fly away in the desert wind. I hope your golden years will afford you more peace and security than ours in Eldorado. Do us one favor, please get this shelter built early so that we will have someplace to go when Mr. Goldstein evicts us for non-payment of rent. Good luck to all of you in the election in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in public comments, please come forward at this time. If not, we will close our public comments. And we will move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain on a warrant. 991636, family-related.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Evans.
I also need to stand on one warrant, number 991434, business-related. And also, I have a question, or, yeah, a question, I guess, on item number one, that it could probably be dealt with real quickly without having to pull it.
Sure.
Madam Clerk, on number one, the approval of the minutes, it shows... Where did I go? Well, I thought it could be dealt with in a minute. On the second page, item number 10, which is again under warrants, that warrant that's listed, the payee on that, I'm not familiar with, and I don't know if perhaps we got the wrong number when I read the number. And if we could check on that later, without having a copy of that, it's hard to say what it was, so... I don't know the process for doing that.
That's the one, Carquest?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, you can go ahead and approve the minutes, and I will do a double-check on the tape recording to make sure I got the number correct, and I'll make any necessary corrections. If the number shows this number, then I'll call you and make the necessary correction.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Then, show entertaining motion.
Yes, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Rollis-Purgeon, and second by Councilmember Mills. Roll call.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Rollis-Purgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It passes. Three, zero, and two, absent. We will move now to our public hearings. Item number four, staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask you, Mr. Evans, he's requested that potentially we could do that a little later. There are some photographs of the signs that they're trying to locate, so if I could ask to move on...
Okay, that'll be fine.
Unfortunately, he's also not here yet for the other public hearings. If you wanted to, we could jump to the legislative items, and while Doug gets his materials and comes back, if that would be appropriate.
Okay, that would be fine. We'll move to item... Do you want to do council comments? We'll move to legislative action, item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item number nine is a measure that was on a previous council agenda, and we'd asked to move it to this evening. What this represents is a change in the allocated positions list. This is for planning and engineering and the building code department. Based on our assessment and on the assessment of the development task force, these are some of the measures that have been identified that we believe will assist in us becoming more business-friendly and efficient in those departments. Now, there are three positions: a plans examiner, planning manager, and a field technician on the engineering side. Now, what I would ask is your approval, but with a proviso, and a very important proviso, that you would be willing and prepared that when we bring the fee study forward, which should be in approximately a month and a half, that you would look favorably upon those, because that's what will fund these positions. Our whole range of fees in that area are below what they should be. We are undertaking our fee study currently, as you are aware, and we will bring that back to you in about a month and a half. The importance of approval this evening for these positions is, as you can appreciate, it takes us a month and a half to two months to do the recruiting process. So, they would not be hired until and if council raised the fees that would pay for these positions, but in the meantime, they'd run in concurrent tracks, and we would save two months' time if we go on the recruitment now, as opposed to after the fee study is complete. So with that, members of council, Mr. Mayor, is my report. Thank you.
Are there any goals or objectives tied to these hires, these new hires?
That's a good question. Indeed, there are goals. There are going to be plenty of goals. For example, the field technician, who's going to be our dust inspector, dealing with all our grading issues, all our construction sites. As you know, we're mandated now, through our agreement with SEVAG, to take care of our PM-10 issues. So, that will be a position that will serve in both, to deal with our PM-10 issues and also to assist the other engineers in their process that they go through, because we're short one-and-a-half positions there. Also, the planning manager, the planning manager is to help run the day-to-day operations, so it allows some of the senior staff to focus more and more on the larger issues that we've been having to deal with lately, i.e., the general plan, multi-species, and things of that nature. It also allows us to have more counterstaff, which will make it easier as citizens and developers come to the office. And finally, a plans examiner, right now, that's one of the areas that's been identified as very much needed, because right now, plans, as you can appreciate, are just becoming overwhelming with all the development in the city. The additional plans examiner will assist in that, and we'll have specific goals for each of these people as we come back to you with our strategic study, our strategic plan, and how we're going to be able to measure everything that we do. For example, part of the recommendations of the task force were customer service in terms of appointments, customer service in terms of how long they have to wait in line, there are a range of things, how long it takes to get an inspection, and on and on and on. So, council, you will see a lot of goals, you'll get reports, and with the addition of our e-government permitting system, which will be coming towards you, I think it'll all be tied into that process as well. It's a rather long answer, Mr. Mayor, but that's, there's a lot of things we're doing there.
Ms. Rollis-Purgeon, you have a question?
I don't have a question. I have a statement. I think it's important that the community understand that during the budget cuts that recently occurred, that a lot of people lost their job, or were laid off, and that these positions are different. These are specialized positions, and they are not replacements of the people that lost their jobs. These are, we are recruiting.
And I would also note, in addition to that, council member, these positions will pay for themselves.
Yes.
They're not additional drain on the general fund. And again, I would just restate that I would suggest strongly that you only approve this and recommend it if, in fact, you would give positive consideration to the fee increase in this area after that study is completed.
So, what you're asking us is that we would make the recommendation now, and we would hire them, but there's no guarantee at this point that we would actually have, unless we change the fees, to pay these new salaries?
That's correct. What I would do is start the recruitment process, however, I would not hire them until and unless council did, in fact, raise the fees. If council didn't, for whatever reason, we would end the recruitment and just, we could remove these positions from the compensation schedule.
So, there'd be no hires until we get the fees?
That is correct. Because actually, I couldn't, and I strongly would not recommend it, because there's no appropriation for any one of these positions. It would only come as a result of two things. One, the fee increase will generate enough to hire these individuals. Second of all, the fee increase will have a technology component that will help us to do the things, the e-government permitting, the technical use in the field, the technology in the field we're going to use, and neither of those will happen without the fee increase. So, I, you know, I just couldn't do it prior to that, and that is an important distinction here.
Well, Mr. Evans.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, I think, two of the positions that we're looking at tonight were discussed heavily in the development task force every meeting, and I think the city manager has responded well to what was brought forth on that task force. We also reviewed fees to an extent, only, I mean, and to see that they are really lower than what they should be for the cost of the service. I know the analysis the city manager will be doing will cover that and show us that. And I think those services are very much needed. Our building department is overwhelmed right now, our planning department is overwhelmed. I've been doing business in this city for 28 years, 29 years, and I went to the planning department last Friday. I was number seven in line, and it is incredible that we are so backed up, and there were two people working the counter at the time, and it is incredible that we have reached that stage, and we definitely need to do something about it. And this will help us to that end. I can see that. And I think they're very important posts, all three of them. The third one, of course, came about after the development task force, we really weren't involved in that, where something we have to contend with PM-10. But I would like to make the motion to approve the resolution, I'm assuming.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mills, and second by Ms. Rollis-Purgeon. I have a question. How much did we pay for the last survey that we had conducted?
The, this National Citizen Survey?
No, no, the one for the department, for the building. For the building department.
That was...
The consultant.
Oh, for the consultant. Troy, I would ask, Troy, if you could recall the figure, please.
I believe off the top of my head, it was roughly between $20,000 to $24,000.
Okay. And along with his recommendations and the ones with the development task force, I see that we're selecting a few things out that we're doing, rather than having a comprehensive plan to address the concerns of the consultant. The consultant made the same recommendations as the previous consultant, and we've spent a lot of money telling us that we need to address not just these specific areas, but the department. And while I would agree that we need to do something in this department, I don't want to see us do it piecemeal, and we are not really addressing all the issues that are of concern in the department. And there's nothing from this that really speaks to the efficiency. We can say we're putting more bodies there, but that doesn't really speak to the efficiency of the department itself. So, I'm just concerned that we're taking out components and we're addressing them, rather than looking at what we were, what we paid for twice, and we're not following those recommendations. It's more than just filling these positions, and certainly they said that, and certainly these positions need to be filled, and I don't have a problem with that at all, but I'm saying, let's look at the big picture, let's look at all of the recommendations, and let's follow through with them, rather than just doing a few of them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mills.
The, I understand what you are saying, but there were items in the consultant report and the task force report that were, that didn't, that were conflicting. And I think what the, what the, what the task force did was, I think, outline a different approach than what the consultant did. approach than what the consultant did in some areas, and I feel for Palm Springs, you know, what the task force came up is a better solution. And this, this hire is definitely the first step, and there are several steps agreed. And this one is the first one. We'll be looking at another step in the architectural review process here soon, and there are just several steps. I don't think we knew them all at once, but this is definitely, I feel, a big one that's needed, and will have an immediate impact, well, immediate as soon as we get somebody. So, thank you.
Sure. I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I think that there are some minor conflicts, but the thread that runs through them all, I think, is consistent, and that is that there is a major overhaul that's needed. This does not address that, and for us to put a little bit of money toward it without addressing what we have been told on numerous occasions that needs to be addressed in the department, I think that we're making a mistake. Because I don't think that throwing money at it is going to be the answer. I don't think that just putting bodies there is going to be the answer, because we've had bodies, lots of bodies. So, we do have a motion on the floor. There are no other questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor, just one.
Yes.
I, I am, having, having sat in every meeting at that billing task force, there, I don't think we had any major overhaul. I think we had, we, we discussed ways to improve, but I, I mean, I think, I think our basic system works. What we're doing is a refinement to, it would be more my interpretation than a, than a major overhaul, but I, again, I understand what your point is.
And I don't think that what is going to occur tonight is a finality either. It is allowing the process of recruitment to continue and to see if, in six weeks or eight weeks, you increase the fees and you're able to justify the allocations. So, I don't have a problem in voting for it tonight, because I believe it's a step in the right direction. It may not be the final step, but at least it's, it's addressing.
Well... And I, I definitely think it is a part of the recommendations unquestionably.
Yes.
Unquestionably it is. I think that there are other issues that were identified that are far more important than addressing these issues. And to pull these out while not addressing some of the others, I, you know, I think can be counterproductive in the long run. Okay.
Call for the question.
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Rosberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
No. And now, we will move back to our agenda as it was flowing from the beginning to our public hearing, number four.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, what is before you here is the appeal on the Plaza Theater. It was an appeal that was brought by, by council, by council member Mills to the council for appeal this evening. As you are aware, council had discussed making some ordinance changes with regards to downtown signs in the theater district for the Plaza Theater and all theaters downtown, and this is the final piece of that process, and it is before you this evening for appeal. And Mr. Evans can give you some of the specifics and the details on the ordinance change and the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have a staff report regarding the appeal of the Planning Commission denial of the sign at the Plaza Theater. The Planning Commission reviewed this item and did recommend by a six-one vote, denial of the sign, primarily, I think, because of the proposed television monitor. The city council may uphold the Planning Commission, which means you would deny the sign, overrule the Planning Commission, which means you approve the sign, or modify the decision of the Planning Commission. In summary, the Palm Springs Follies applied for a historic theater sign pursuant to the zoning ordinance change that the council approved. The key issue here would be two attraction displays, one facing Palm Canyon Drive sidewalk with a television monitor. Both sign cabinets would be identical to the sign cabinet on the photograph I just gave you. One facing Palm Canyon has the TV monitor. The backside would look exactly the same, and then the actual copy in that sign cabinet, Jerry Ogburn's working with the Follies, and basically, it would be Share the Legend, and basically, an advertisement for downtown Palm Springs on your way out of the theater as opposed to another advertisement for the, the Palm Springs Follies. In the staff report, I outlined the types of findings that the city council would have to make if they were inclined to move forward with the project. I also put together recommendations that were included in staff's report to the Planning Commission, having to do with possible conditions of approval for the particular sign, having to do with the materials and finish match the existing sign. The rear of the sign, which faces south, which you really can't see, would be fully enclosed on the backside, so that it would be something you couldn't reach around and get behind it, and that the audibility of the television monitor be at a low level so it would not disturb the outdoor dining patrons. And really, it's intended to only be audible for people that are looking at the TV monitor adjacent to it on the sidewalk. Again, the Planning Commission looked at this. I think they're just uncomfortable with the television monitor. That's the nature of the appeal. The appellant, you know, is really a council review of the item, and I'll certainly try to answer any questions that you have with regards to this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Evans, one thing I didn't specifically see on here, but I noticed on the, the drawings, which, which I, which I did see earlier, and also, these appear to have, have shown that, to have been modified to show it, is that the speakers that were kind of tacked on the front are to be integrated into the sign. Is that, is that correct? I didn't see it specifically on your...
Yes, we're working with, you know, the sign fabricator, you know, if this does go forward, to try to work on getting the speakers into a position where they're not visible, and also, by positioning them properly, will be in a position where the audibility will be really directed at the listener right in front.
I would only note that I have looked at this sign in detail. I did bring forth the appeal. I certainly do not have a problem with what is being proposed here. I think it meets the intent of what our ordinance was. And I would approve the resolution, move, approve the resolution, upholding the appeal. Did I say that right?
That would be over...
No.
Yeah.
Overwriting this, the decision, but upholding the appeal.
It would be in the, I did draft a resolution. It basically is overruling the Planning Commission, which means you're overruling their denial, and now therefore says you're approving the sign. I believe that's...
That's what you meant.
That's what I meant.
I'll second it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Eddy.
The clerk has, has reminded us that we need to open the public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, we had a question, that's right. We need to open this public hearing, I am sorry. Anyone wishing to make public comments on this issue will have five minutes.
You can close it now.
We'll close the public hearing.
Try it again, Chris.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I'd like to make the, I'd like to move the resolution I previously moved.
I'll second it.
Just don't make me say it again.
You're fine. We have a motion by Mr. Mills, it's been seconded by Ms. Rosberg, to overrule the Planning Commission. Roll call.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Rosberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Just like to thank Mr. Mills for bringing the appeal forward.
A little soon, a little quicker than normal.
We'll move to our next item, which is a public hearing, item number five, General Plan Land Use and Circulation Element Amendments, Case 5.087, Indian Oasis, and Case 5.0966, Palm Canyon Town Homes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the next three hearings are on the same project, the Indian Oasis, and Mr. Evans will be giving the detailed reports on all three. This first one has to do with the general plan use and amendments. I turn it over to Mr. Evans for the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the third cycle of general plan amendments that the city has done this year. There are two general plan amendments included in this cycle. The first one is an application by Ernest Noya on behalf of the Indian Alates, the Bo family, Short family, Diaz, as well as the Mid Valley Center LP, for a general plan amendment to amend the Mid Valley Parkway Center, renaming it the Indian Oasis Report, increasing the allowable height from 100 feet to 130 feet within this planning area only in the city, to amend the land use diagram for a portion of the project adjacent to existing condominium uses to allow residential uses, which could be timeshares, condominiums, or apartments. The project is generally located at the intersection of Crosley Road and Mesquite Avenue. The second project with regards to this item is a much smaller project. It's really an amendment to the land use plan of the general plan. It's by Holly Hills Development, Palm Canyon Town Homes LLC, to redesignate 5.8 acres of land from Low Two Low Density Residential to Low Six Low Density Residential for property located at the northwest corner of South Palm Canyon Drive, Murray Canyon Drive. It's currently zoned R2. Both projects have, have been reviewed by the Planning Commission at separate hearings. We bring them forward to the council as, as one item relative to a public hearing because of some state law relative to general plan amendments. The first item, the Indian Oasis Resort, has to do with first and foremost, dealing with the general plan policies relative to building height. As I indicated, the current building height maximum at this site is 100 feet. The proposed building height is 130 feet for the resort hotel, and then again, we would amend the general plan relative to allowing some residential use in the area. There's also a general plan text amendment, policy 3.30.14, Mid Valley Center. That would be revised to basically talk about the new development project that would be proposed at this location. It has to do with a resort hotel, vacation units, hotel units, condominium, apartments, championship golf course, conference meeting space, health spa, fitness, and other associated amenities. The property is 273 acres. The hotel site is located in the very eastern portion of the site, adjacent to the Whitewater Wash. It is as far away from any existing development as you could possibly get the hotel site, and I'll point that out on the exhibits. And then that policy does specifically state the maximum building height in this project area only. This would not apply anyplace else in town, would be 130 feet. The hotel sites, depending on the direction, ranges from 1,200 to 2,000 feet from the nearest residential area around it, and again, it's adjacent to the Whitewater Wash. From the standpoint of the environmental issues that we've taken a look at, there's a companion project on your agenda with regards to this project. The companion project is a planned development district, and we did a joint environmental document for the general plan amendment as well as the planned development district. We did receive some comments from the public during the review process of the environmental document. At last week's Planning Commission, the Sierra Club submitted a letter, which we provided a copy to the city council. They've also submitted a letter tonight that we provided a copy to the city council and associated attachments and exhibits. Essentially, the Sierra Club is alleging that the city is, is not complied with California Environmental Quality Act in that we are recommending approval of a project that has impacts to a federally endangered plant, the Coachella Valley Milk Fetch. They are also alleging that there is a sand transport problem in the area, that if the project's approved, it will stop sand transport and further harm the habitat of rare endangered species, particularly sand habitat-type species. This is an interesting time for the Sierra Club to submit a comment. In the year 2002, the city council reviewed a development project and general plan amendment on this very same property. The project area is almost the same. The physical impacts to Coachella Valley Milk Fetch relative to development and issues the same. The issues of sand transport, the same. And back in 2001, this project was approved by the city council without any objections from anybody. We circulated the environmental document in 2001 to the State Clearing House. It was then circulated to California Department of Fish and Game, the Resources Agency, and a number of other state departments, as well as available for public review. No comments were received. The project was approved. There were no official protests after the approval. The project went through its full entitlement process without any objections. Also, back in 2001, the Bureau of Indian Affairs, on behalf of the Indian Alates, processed a federal environmental assessment that looked at development of virtually this same project at the same general intensities. That federal environmental assessment resulted in the issuance of a finding of no significant impact, better known as a Fonzie. That Fonzie was available for public review. The bureau consulted with federal agencies. The bureau is responsible for consulting with regards to federally listed endangered species. That consultation process occurred. The Fonzie was issued. Nobody protested it. Fish and Wildlife Service did not submit any information that we found in the record relative to that environmental assessment. So, in essence, in 2002, there were no concerns about this project. The environmental issues, the environmental report that was done by James Cornet and Associates regarding plant and animal species is the same document that was looked at in 2001. The issues haven't changed, the property hasn't changed. There were no Coachella Valley Milk Fetch found on site. So, in 2003, we're before the city council with a letter from the Sierra Club objecting to the project, basically asking the city council to require a full environmental impact report on the project, and I think it was your Planning Commission's belief that this project was completely reviewed in 2001 without objection, that in 2003, the same environmental conditions exist, and the commission did recommend approval. They felt that the SEQUAD document was adequate. What we have done is we've prepared a revised resolution on the general plan amendment relative to this project. We've added in findings, and, you know, in addition to all the environmental review that's been done, the Aguacalliente Band of Quea Indians has adopted a draft multi-species habitat management plan for all tribal lands within the reservation. This project has been found to be in conformance with that multi-species plan. That multi-species plan and its requirements are incorporated into the environmental assessment that's before you. They're incorporated into the... into the environmental assessment that's before you. They're incorporated into the conditions of approval and the mitigation monitoring program. And the mitigation requirements for this property include, at a minimum, the payment of an $800 per acre fee. There's going to be some additional consultations with Fish and Wildlife Service as they go through the federal permitting process for stream bed alterations, in addition to dealing with avoidance measures at the construction stage for other animal species that are not found on site today but could relocate, in particular, the burrowing owl, which can move around from site to site. So you basically survey the site before construction. If you take a look at the environmental assessment, as well as the findings that we put together, we feel very comfortable that the project's environmental impacts have been clearly disclosed to the city council and the public on that particular project. With regards to the other project, relatively small general plan amendment on South Palm Canyon Drive, I'll go over the details of that project. We also did a environmental assessment on that particular project. The commission found that there were no significant environmental impacts, and I will show you the general plan amendment as I go to the boards. The South Palm Canyon general plan amendment is for a small parcel of land located on South Palm Canyon Drive. This is Murray Canyon, South Palm Canyon Drive. The subject property is this property right in here, involves a piece of property that's part of the ridge development, single-family subdivision hillside that has not had any development occur on it. It also includes a very narrow sliver of property in front of the Canyon Heights condominium project right in here. The property boundary is shown here, and the general plan amendment is to upgrade the general plan from residential low two to residential low six, which is six units per acre. There are cluster condominiums here to the north, to the east, as well adjacent to, and to the south. And the planning commission, when they looked at the low two designation of two units per acre, just felt that that was probably not appropriate considering the surrounding land uses and the difficulty that would pose for anybody to try to develop the property, particularly considering the property's very narrow, and there's quite a few street improvements that need to go in. You just aren't going to be able to make a project work and get all those engineering improvements, as well as other improvements on the property at two units per acre. The Indian Oasis general plan amendment is shown here, subject property, again, Crosley, Mesquite Avenue, the Whitewater Wash, and I'd like to go to a larger exhibit real quickly. That better shows the overall area. To the north, you have the Dream Homes, the Cimarron Golf Course, the Palm Springs Market Fair, existing subdivided and entitled lands immediately to the north and the west. To the south, you have the Desert Water Agency Plant, Knott's Oasis, Fairway Condominiums, Cathedral Canyon Country Club, and the City of Palm Springs. So if you take a look at the subject property, it is completely surrounded by urban development. The sand movement direction in the Coachella Valley is this direction. Sand has to move from one sandy area to the next. And if you take a look at upwind from this site, there is very little sand, and that sand distribution system has been disrupted for 30 years to that site. The sand conditions here are not light wind-blown sand anymore. All that's blown off. It's starting to solidify and compact, which means you have a different type of environment than you had many years ago. Coachella Valley Milk Fetch really likes light disturbed soils, and it's commonly found next to roadways that are disturbed, where you go back in and shoulder the road, turn the sand over. The Milk Fetch likes that kind of disturbed soil, where it's lighter, wind-blown, as opposed to the more compacted soils you have in this location. The general plan amendment includes, as I indicated, a text change as well as a map change, the existing general plan for the area. The area outside of the Wash is industrial with an open space buffer along the existing condominiums. The proposed general plan amendment is industrial up in this area, water course out in the Wash, golf course on the south side of Mesquite, medium-density residential in this location relative to the condominiums or timeshares, and industrial on the south side of Mesquite, west of Crosley, for an office complex. The general plan was really intended to help implement the development of this site, which the council approved in 2001, with a general plan amendment to basically come in and say, "We really want a targeted and focused development in this area," and you adopted a general plan that said that's the case. Tonight's proposed general plan amendment for this project is intended to help facilitate this development. And to just go through very quickly, this area would be designated industrial on the general plan, and it's intended for office, commercial-type uses. This area would be intended for residential, which would be timeshares, condominiums, possibly some apartments, really a financing tool to help get the golf course and the hotel going. The golf course area in these areas would be designated golf course on the general plan. This area would be designated industrial, and we do allow hotel uses in the industrial zones. And this area of the site would be retail village, and this would be casitas and recreation that ties back into the hotel. And then the golf course continues into the Whitewater Wash in that area. So we'd prefer to give you a complete report on the entire hotel project and resort project, but that's the next public hearing on your item. This particular hearing is on the general plan amendment for this property, as well as the South Palm Canyon property. That completes my report at this time.
Counsel, are there any questions before we open the public hearing? At this time, we will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak to this issue may come forward at this time. You will have five minutes.
It's Mayor and Council, Marvin Ruse, Monero Smith and Associates, 777 East Tocwitz, planners and engineers for the project. We're in favor of the planning commission action on this, rather than the general plan. This is a site-specific facilitation of a little bit of extra height. As you see the buildings as we come up, the work that's been done since the original approval is relatively, just, I mean, it's short of amazing. They did a great job. Wimberly is one of the finest resort hotel architects in the world, Hyatt Maui and a lot of places that you'd know from all your travel logs. They've gone through and given this program very, very much, a lot of detailed look at what needs to happen here. The original site plan that was approved is really pretty much intact, but they've changed the entire orientation of how you enter the hotel. It's going to be entered from the levee side, looking over the whole east side now. So it's going to be some of the things that we're requiring to happen. The 130 feet is not from the top of the levee. It's from the bay. So next to the levee, it's not 130 feet. As Doug said, it's 1,200 to 2,000 feet away. And we're about, I believe, our foundation elevation is 50 to 70 feet lower than the airport, than the runway elevation as you go up Ramon, as well as you come over the bridges, both at the Mid Valley Parkway and at Ramon. Those are obviously higher, too. So it'll be an outstanding building. It definitely will be seen. We're not saying you won't see it, but we think it's, being site-specific, that it's not a precedent. If somebody else wanted to come in and do a great project like this, I would certainly hope you'd entertain it, but there are very few sites like this. The other was the land use, a little bit of residential to replace the industrial on the south side of Mesquite, as well as coming back and actually placing golf as the buffer between the existing residential, just so we didn't end up with residential, industrial, and then the residential again. So the golf replaces the industrial and certainly is a hope to facilitate this project, and we look for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this project? Please come forward, give your name to the clerk, and you'll have five minutes. Good evening, sir.
Evening. Ernest Noya, 429 East Tocwitz Canyon Way, Palm Springs. I'm going to make this short, because the only issue I want to address is the height, because everybody gets freaked out about 130 feet. First of all, we were playing it extremely safe. We could argue that the highest point on the site is 385 feet, and we're really only 100 feet. But in the infinite wisdom of the planning department, which I agree, let's address the issue so we never get attacked on that point. So what we did was we tucked it in right up against the actual levee. So what happens is you go in at street level at Crosley, and unfortunately, the right exhibit's not up there. We will see it next time around. Well, there it is. The one on the lower right-hand side. Thank you, Doug. See, I knew you were, you know, they're looking, I was just saying, they're looking for a new Roy. The, on the left is the elevation at Crosley, and on the right is the elevation of the hotel. So what actually happens is you're starting at 18 feet above grade to begin with. So if you want to say it's over the 100 feet, it's about, well, to be honest with you, the highest point is the elevator shaft. So without the elevator shaft, you're actually within the 100 feet. With it, you're about 109 feet. But the reason why I did it is because Wimberly designed an outstanding hotel, which is not up there, but you'll see, and I want that specific hotel to be built. And what it allows me to do is, besides the economy of it, is it allows me to have three times the outdoor meeting space than any other hotel in the valley. Mr. Dunn here from the convention center was at a meeting, and he said, "People come here because of the outdoor meeting." So I said, "Well, you know what?" I looked at Marriott and Hyatt and all our competition down valley and said, "You know, they got 20,000, 15,000. We have 130,000 of landscaped terrace meeting area that's designed by Lifescapes, who's the same people that did the Bellagio and the same people that did the Mirage. So we think that it was worth it to do it that way." And then it makes a lower profile. You're better off having it one time, and you're not blocking any views. So that's the only thing I want to explain. It's 130 feet, you won't, from the street, it won't look anything like that. But it also puts us on the map, I think, as having an outstanding hotel in Palm Springs and resort. So, you know, with that, I'll address the, actually, the other issue I'd like to address is the environmental, just briefly. Doug said it exactly correct. It's a little too late. It's a little, and it's too late, as far as I'm concerned. But I've addressed it in a letter, which I probably put on record right now, save me coming back. And actually, I have a copy of the elevation so you don't have to strain yourself and get up there, because I know a lot of you's getting old, you know. So this is for the record. This is the original. There's also a letter in there from George Ferris, and his resume's in there as well. And that basically addresses the sand transport, you know, I mean, we really have an area that sand transport can't, I mean, let me put it this way, sand can't be transported. There's nowhere to go except the pools in, across the way. So I just think that it's a specious argument, and I'm not sure it's valid. I am not a biologist. However, my biologist does agree with me, so I feel better about it. And George Ferris has consulted, and this letter verifies that, with the Bureau of Indian Affairs to make sure that these changes we've made in implementing the plan that was previously approved was not, did not require any further review, and they felt it did not. So we feel that the city council should adopt this general plan amendment, because it's going to facilitate what we need to do. I'll go into the other, you know, good stuff later, because you want to hear from me more than once. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing? If not, then we will close the public hearing. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I wonder if we could ask Mr. Evans to outline for us the changes or the revisions in the project since the 2001 approval, as to which Mr. Noya is bringing this back for, if he could.
I've given you an overview of the general plan changes, and what I'd like to do is give you a quick overview of the original master plan for the project, and I'll work off of this document and not be able to get all the way to the top of it. The proposed general plan, or land plan relative to the general plan is again here, showing you the hotel, commercial and resort development. The prime changes is there's a sliver of land in Cathedral City that's in the Whitewater Wash, and they'd like the ability, if they can work with Cathedral City, which they've had indication that it won't be a problem, to do a little bit of golf and landscape improvement in this area. So the site has expanded with a little sliver of land, and so the site area has changed a little bit. The hotel location is pretty much in the same location. This commercial is a little bit different configured. The timeshares were originally tied into the hotel. They've been moved to this location, and the change would be timeshare apartments or condominiums. The original golf course came all the way up to this area of Mesquite, and then wrapped around behind this commercial pod. It was really felt that it probably is a better golf course layout to have it come down and loop and return, and a better commercial layout to have that commercial frontage. And then again, in this location, this was all commercial before, and now it's predominantly residential. The original land plan is shown here. So again, golf around there. This was commercial, some golf, you know, going up and around. What they've really done with the golf course is they've consolidated the golf course, so you have parallel fairways, as opposed to a couple of places where you had single-linked fairways, which, for golfers like me, are tougher to play, and they don't give you that real good feel of open space. And then from a development standpoint, obviously, the building height of the hotel has changed. So from a physical development standpoint that affects the two issues of the Sierra Club, the only thing that is different is a little sliver of land over here that would look foolish if it were left. It would look odd if it were left. Just to give you an idea of how big it is, it would be right there, real little tiny sliver, and you'd have a little sliver of area unimproved right next to improved golf course, almost all the way around it. So that's physically the only change relative to the environmental concerns that the Sierra Club brought up.
Doug? The tribal habitat conservation plan, how does this project fit into their plan?
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to say, we've asked the tribal staff, and in essence, they asked the tribal council to review and determine whether or not this project is in conformance with the multi-species plan. And the tribal council, and you have it in the materials we provided to you tonight, did recommend that the council approve this project, and in essence said it's in compliance, because they have to be in compliance with that plan. This particular area on the tribal habitat plan basically is an area that says to develop it, you have to pay a fee. You have to be cautious about some of the migratory wildlife that could come on the site at any time, because they do move around seasonally. So you basically verify that the animals are not there, protect the nests if they are. are. You know, so by complying with those types of criteria in the mitigation program, the project is found to be consistent with the tribal HCP. I would add, in the Coachella Valley HCP that we've been participating, this area is not designated as a conservation area, it's not designated an area that needs to be conserved, it's open space. It's an area that that draft plan contemplates development, and probably the key issues that that plan would require would be payment of a fee for the development of the property, as well as the same types of things relative to Burway Now. Those plans are going to be fairly consistent at this particular location. The amount of fee could change. That's how they tie in.
Can you tell me, who filed any written or oral opposition in 2001?
There was no written opposition, and there was no oral opposition. And we received no written comments regarding any wildlife concerns during the review of that environmental document in 2001.
And the applicants have not changed?
The applicants, the Indian Alatis, I don't believe have changed. Mr. Noya's involvement has not changed. I think there's a little bit of a change of a partnership, having to do with the ultimate management of the property, which I think Mr. Noya now has, no longer has a partner that was previously involved. But Mr. Noya could tell you exactly what the relationships are. In essence, when I look at the application, the key components and players are the same and those of the Indian Alatis.
Tell us about the authority that the tribal council has on this, tribal authority has on this.
Yeah. The city council and the tribal council entered into a land use agreement in 1977. It's had a number of amendments, but they don't change anything having to do with really this property and how it works. That agreement basically says, for the benefit of the community and all lands within the community, there will be a joint planning process that would be administered on most reservation lands by the city. That land use agreement requires developers to go through the city permit process, which this project has, goes through all of our normal channels. We review projects, whether they're on Indian or non-Indian land, in very much the same way. And once the city makes its final decision on a project, under the tribal appeal ordinance, certain parties have the ability to appeal to the tribal council, any decision of the city council, including conditions of approval, changes of zone, general plan amendments, as well as environmental determinations relative to Secua NEPA. So in this case, we're acting as an agent for the tribe, and if an appeal were filed, the tribal council's decision would be final on this particular project.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, I just have one final question. Were we able to identify any of the Coachella Valley milkvech on this particular site?
The surveys that were done, they found no Coachella Valley milkvech on this site.
Would you explain for us what a milkvech is?
A milkvech is a small desert plant that only grows in certain conditions relative to moisture and seasons. And on this particular location, the project biologist followed all the appropriate protocol as far as time of year to survey, and during their site transects, they did not find any of the plants on site.
Okay. Ms. Reller Spurgeon.
How about the neighborhoods? Have we heard from them?
Planning staff actually has been quite busy with people from condominium projects, particularly to the south, the fairways, condominiums, and the other project next door. Most of the inquiries have been inquisitive. People have been concerned about, you know, what is the project? And I think fundamentally, when they see that their neighbor is going to be a golf course, and that the nearest building will be, I don't remember the exact dimension, it's 400, 500 feet away. And then when they realize that the hotel is 2,000 feet away, they realize that they have a pretty good neighbor, and, you know, it's better than probably having the open desert next door that they've been dealing with. And anytime you can have a golf course come up to your property line, it's usually viewed from residential perspectives as a pretty good addition to the neighborhood. So, you know, after meeting with people that came to the counter, I don't believe there was any testimony during the public hearing.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Just one last question of Mr. Evans, although it might be multi-part. Doug, in 2001, that was the initial native deck on this project. The reason it is backed and was approved by the council, and it received no input adversely or non-adversely from Sierra Club or the center, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, so, the assumption would be that at that time, there was, that there were none. And what could have happened in two years, that there would have been some, or actually a year and a half, that would prompt those two organizations to file this complaint that they have, when it appears to me, by the information we've received, that nothing has really happened, short of very minor revisions in a major project?
Well, I think in their letter, they didn't really explain that, but if you take a look at their attachments, they did indicate that, and incorporate the information from the Palm Springs project, or Classic project located to the north. It's separated from this property by the Cimarron Golf Course, so they don't even touch up. So they assume that if the milkvech could be at that site, it could be at this site. But I don't believe they submitted any evidence that there's an endangered species on this particular site. So they've made an assumption that it could be occupied by the plant. So that seems to be their concern, but they didn't state anything specifically what changed. And they did the same thing on the Classic, as you recall. You know, it was a previously approved project, certified EIR, and, you know, out of the blue, we got a protest and a lawsuit on that particular project. So, that kind of surprised everybody, since that project went through a thorough process, although more years prior.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
And what was the number of plants that they found on that other project?
Oh, I believe it was eight to 15. I'd have to look at the number. I've looked at two documents today, and they weren't the specific documents on the Classic. I could look it up during the public, you know, later on, and let you know, but it was not that many on 400 acres.
That's what I remember, I remember eight. Counsel? Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, you do have a revised resolution on this item. It's in your packet that we handed out before the meeting. It's labeled as Item 5C8, and it's a revised resolution that basically incorporates some additional findings based upon the Planning Commission's public hearing and the information we've received on this project. It does not change the Planning Commission's recommendation, it just outlines in more detail the findings.
Uh huh.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I would like to move the resolution, the revised resolution per the Secua findings, and compliment Mr. Noya again on a very nice project.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Mills and seconded by Councilmember Reller Spurgeon. There are no other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried unanimously, and we have two absent. We will now move to item number six, which is a public hearing, case number 5.0870, Plan Development 268, T-Track Map 31318, Indian Oasis Resort. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask Doug to continue with these hearings. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I would like to, for the record, incorporate all of the testimony and comments and staff report from the previous item into this project. They are related, as far as the Indian Oasis project, so I don't have to go back through all of those issues for the record, and the council doesn't have to ask me questions that we've gone over. So from the standpoint of this particular action before the council, this is the actual certification of the environmental assessment, negative declaration relative to the Plan Development District amendments, as well as adoption of a Plan Development District-specific noise overlay that implements the Part 150 study done at the airport relative to revised noise contours and diagrams. I indicated already that it would modify the Plan Development District. The overall project would be a total of 700 units and hotel, timeshare, vacation unit, condominiums, casitas, or apartments, 400,000 square feet of corporate business park and retail space with an 18-hole golf course. And again, the Plan Development District would include a hotel height up to 130 feet. In addition, this would include a tentative track map to subdivide 233 acres into 36 parcels for future development that also assist with the financing of the project. I'm not going to go through the written staff report in detail. This is really the fun part of this project, because we had the opportunity to work with Mr. Noya and the Planning Commission, with a design team that's put forth a Plan Development District that has very, very good community amenities, it's very well-designed, and has a golf course that would fill out this portion of the community very, very well. So I'm going to go through the full presentation, I gave you bits and pieces before, so parts of it I'll go fast and parts of it I'll slow down. I went through in the previous project and outlined the hotel and resort project from a land use standpoint relative to how it fit on the general plan. The first phase of the project will be over in this area, having to do with Phase One being a professional office building in this location. That building has already been approved by the Planning Commission, their decision on the architecture is final. Again, a relocation of the golf. Mr. Rus in his public comments talked about circulation. The main access way to the hotel is located in this location. You would come in and have a window into the golf course. The outdoor event area that Mr. Noya talked about is here, off of the conference building, it ties back into the tennis center. So you really have an outdoor lawn area, tennis complex, conference facility that can all work together for outdoor events. There's a private casitas area here for an executive area for ownership, and that can also tie back into the hotel relative to operation. Main roadway comes in and switch, comes around the backside of the project. So you enter on the northeast side, and as you come through the lobby, you look back over the golf course, right into Palm Canyon and Stockwoods Canyon. So the idea was really to have a little bit of mystery upon arrival, and then you come back through the hotel and really see them, Santa Sento Mountains, the Santa Rosa Mountains, as well as the golf amenities in front. Golf course and driving range, again, in the same locations, and then Mesquite Avenue, street crossing here, street crossings here for the golf course, so you can rotate back and around. The subdivision map is for this portion of the property only. This southwest quadrant has a separate parcel map, it's on your agenda as a separate item. And again, the residential, commercial, casitas, hotel, and then the large parcels for the Mr. Noya alluded to the height of the building. Basically, the way it's laid out at this point, there's 10 floors in the building. The first floors are taller than the rest, and then you get up into the guest rooms. And again, the very top of the building is at 130. So if you measured it from the dyke side, it's less than 130. If you come back on this side, it's 130. And what we didn't want to have happen is have a hotel developer show up to do a hotel and have somebody say, "It's not really 100 feet, it's close." So we just said, "Let's take care of the general plan amendment," so it's explicitly clear what the council's intent was. Good perspective of what the hotel would look like across the golf course. This would be the southwest exposure of the hotel. Basically, you would come through the lobby, and you would look out across those portions of the site. The retail concept is shown here, and again, an insight plan along Crosley Road here, basically a retail village in a conceptual architectural style. Up to the far right is the residential timeshare component, basically a stepped building design that has units facing the interior pool as well as the golf course. To give you an idea about the height of the hotel, here's the cross-section from Crosley Road, to give you an idea, the hotel is 1,500 feet from Crosley Road. Basically, from the fairway condominiums, it's 2,500 feet. So you really take a look at that profile, and the timeshares are about 400 feet. So as you look out of the fairways, you might be able to find glimpses of the hotel once the landscaping comes in, and from some areas, you probably couldn't see it because of the landscaping, as well as the residential units. And I think we have gone over all the exhibits. The Planning Commission did, again, recommend approval of this. The issues in the revised resolution relative to Secua findings incorporate all the information that we previously discussed relative to the Coachella Valley milkvech and sand transport. So the revised resolution and the materials we handed out is the first resolution. If the council's so inclined, it establishes the environmental findings on the project. The second resolution, which is in your original packet, actually implements the general plan and approves the Plan Development District, as well as the tentative subdivision map. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Are there any questions on the report? At this time, we will open the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this issue, issue number five, number six, please come forward.
It's Mayor and Council, Marvin Newsigan, Monero Smith and Associates, again, here to support the project and the request of council's approval. Couple of technical things, there's been a lot of action on this. We really compliment staff from city attorney through the planning department, engineering department, for trying to work with us on this. Dealing with a passionate but not overly experienced developer has really brought a lot of things back into lot of things back into focus, like how complicated this process can be. And the staff had, when we went back for the revisions, had, at the request of, I believe, the City Attorney's Office, had come up with an entire new, different format for how to present conditions of approval. So we had a set of conditions, a very extensive set of conditions from 2001, and suddenly we had an entirely different format and different arrangement and some language changes that were very critical. And we've asked, basically, on these type of projects, can't we have a master set of conditions? And when we come in with a parcel map, then everything applies except these things change so that it's real easy to see. So I believe we've got there, and I think, Doug, there was a slip. I think the old parcel map conditions got slipped in instead. So I think we're asking for those to come back as they were modified. One other minor technical thing on 6C2, it's kind of humorous, I guess, for those of us who are involved in it, but the environmental documentation was done by CRM Tech, the Cultural Resource Management, as opposed to Arm Tech, which I believe makes munitions in Coachella. Again, those are minor, but sometimes you get a little laugh out of those. The acreage is 261 acres in the city. The 273 was an old number. So those are some areas that'll save, if I can save any $90, $200 an acre, I'm going for it. The kind of one area that we've been kind of fighting back and forth on is bike paths. We've asked, basically, to have a lot of flexibility with the bike path system. Staff has wanted to see meandering bike paths onsite, on property. We feel that in case along Mesquite in particular, that does make a lot of sense. We have a wide, a wide street system there with no parking. On the other hand, we've also got a rising street over the bridge. We're not sure, you know, we want the flexibility to come back with the final design that shows how the bike path system will work both along Crosley as well as Mesquite. And that's the way the Planning Commission approved it, basically left the option open to us. We want to maintain that. Another one that came up recently, and I'm not sure, maybe this has been discussed at another venue, there is a condition requiring that we, that this project pay a prorata share of the cost of the Mid Valley Parkway. This is a new condition. It was not in the original. We've asked that that be deleted. It's not part of the, there's no nexus between the way the project has changed and that. We understand that that's something that kind of fell between the cracks relative to the original Mid Valley Parkway funding, et cetera. So hopefully, that's already taken care of. And one thing that we've applied for that's not before you tonight, but we hope it's before you soon, is a street name change. We've actually applied for a street name change to change Mesquite Avenue to Dynashore Drive from Genatri Trail to the bridge, where it turns into Dynashore in Cathedral City. The petitioning process is such that I believe we control 82% of the land, and we have a petition in front of the Planning Department to do that. There's a process that'll go through. We've agreed to change the, you know, pay for the, the street sign changes and those sorts of things. So that will be coming, and with as complicated as this project was, I guess, it's one more thing we didn't need to add tonight, but we did have that in front of you. Again, we want to compliment the staff. We hope the conditions on the parcel map, maybe Doug can explain that, will revert to those which were submitted by the Planning Commission to the council. Again, with all of the elements that have going back and forth relative to the complexities, the environmental work, et cetera, it's understandable, but that's one very significant change that we'd like to see back. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please come forward this time. Give your name to the clerk. Good evening and welcome.
My name is Michael Noya. My address is 429 East Takwitz, Palm Springs. I'm here to support the Indian Oasis, a project by my family. I have, I am licensed in real estate, and I came out to help identify land for conservation with my dad. I think the project will be great for Palm Springs, and my father said he would pay me if I said this. Thank you.
Is this a rebuttal? Good evening. Yeah, five minutes.
Excuse me, Ernest Noya, 429 East Takwitz. Not only did I agree to pay him, but I said I'd give his brother half, so his brother's on the phone saying, "Go talk." I first said it was $2 a word if he wrote it himself. If I wrote it, it was a dollar. But he gets it anyway. Okay, I'm not sure what the hell we're doing here, to be honest with you, but I'm just going to address what I think is the problem. Because, yeah, there's so many conditions, and my book is that thick. And I will tell you, I didn't get to read them all, Doug. So I hope you didn't slip nothing on. David, did he slip anything on me? Don't answer it. Two things, or four things, or 10 things. Mesquite Avenue, the reimbursement. My argument's very simple. It's the argument of the landowners. If you want to charge for a prorata share, you should have paid them more for the money when you took, for the land when you took it. It's a really simple argument. If you want them to reimburse you for the street, then you should have paid them more because it was, it would have cost them more when you condemned it. So that's our argument. We want that removed if we can. Well, actually, we want that removed. Second thing is the bike path. I've, I learned more about bike paths than I want to know. I've agreed to do bike paths, not a problem, but when I read it tonight, it was on the wrong side, I think. I think we agreed to west, to see. The bottom line is, I want to put the meandering bike path on the hotel grounds, all along Crosley and over the bridge on that side. I want to put it in the street along Crosley because I have the Mid Valley Business Park lease almost approved, and I'll be able to take it right up the street on the east side of Crosley. And I wanted to put it down, excuse me, on the west side of Crosley, south of Mesquite, but it doesn't connect, and I told Doug he could have it on the other side. But the bottom line is, on Mesquite, I really want it in the street. Okay? That's really what I want. So what the Planning Commission did was say, "We'll give you those three choices." I'm not sure they, they wrote it right, but as long as we're in principle understand, we're going to put nice bike paths, and I'm not going to put a $200 million resort in and not have a bike path. We're going to do it right, but I don't want to have it in front of the office buildings. I don't think it belongs. I think it should be on Mesquite, and I'm going to put it on both sides of the street, in the street, and still do a Class 1 on the grounds, on the hotel grounds. So that's just that, and he can, Doug can clarify it. The street name change, I already told you about. I think the point I want to make at this point is that, to me, this is more than just a hotel. I mean, a lot of people want to see this because it's a hotel. But in reality, since I had to take it back a year ago, when I was here two years ago, I had somebody under contract, and I thought he was going to start building the commercial right, I mean, the resort right away, and I would build the, the commercial, what I know. It turned out after a year and between 9/11 and other reasons, he, I was free of that obligation. So Carolyn and I spent the past year having this design, assembled the best team in the world, as far as I'm concerned, designed a terrific project, and then spent, I've spent many hours in about seven months crunching the numbers on how do you finance a hotel in Palm Springs or in the desert with this vacancy problem? I think I figured out how to do it. And with the help of staff, and I mean staff, I mean from the airport, just imagine, the only guy I haven't seen is Tom Canal yet, because I'm going to take it here as bonds later. He's the last guy. But everybody else at this table I've dealt with, and with this group, we have put together what I see as the future of Palm Springs. Downtown is our, our asset, but I'm going to create that corporate center that everybody talked about. I really want them to see that building. Are they going to see that rendering at one point, Doug? Are they going to see the rendering of the office building? Okay. That office building is going to be the beginning of the corporate center. Once I get the Canutian Track, or the old Canutian Track locked down, actually, the Fonzie was, I think today it's being signed. So once I get that, then that's going to be our Alternative Energy Research Center, and I'm going to target market an industry, alternative energy, the ideal one. So it's kind of ironic that the conservationists are hassling me when I'm the one using recycled water, solar power, you know, building materials, and I'm kind of teared off about that, but they're going to learn the wrath of a Brooklyn Italian soon. But any event, create the corporate center. I convert the defunct business park with a little luck. I take care of those defaulted bonds at the same time, and we end up with not only a first-class resort that stands out among anything in the valley, except for the casinos when they start building, but everybody else will be competitive, but also a reason to move people out of downtown, put them here and let downtown or Section 14, where my building is, expand into a greater downtown, a greater retail tourist-oriented downtown. Take the offices out, put them there, keep them in town. Business retention because they're close to Down Valley. So I get another public hearing, don't I? I'll be back. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to speak in the public hearing? Then we will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Evans, I wonder if you could comment on the, first, just a couple of things. The bike path and the interpretation that we heard, both in Mr. Noya and Mr. Russe, what the Planning Commission decision was or suggestion versus what we have in our conditions? And also confirm that the, the conditions that we do have are, are not the conditions of the revised tentative map, but of the original tentative map, just so we know what we're taking action on. And then also, the, a comment, and I don't know if it's you or Mr. Barakian, on the, on the fee for the reimbursement on the Mid Valley Parkway, a little explanation on that, please?
The, the issue regarding bikeways is one that Mr. Noya and his team and city staff have been working on, and we worked on it with the Planning Commission last week. The conditions of approval on Crosley Road and Mesquite Avenue basically have three options for bikeways depending on locations, and I won't go through each one because I think they're, they're correct. The final development plans, including bikeways, all go back to the Planning Commission. So if we have to make some adjustments on exactly how the bikeways work, I think the Planning Commission's action was clearly along that line. On Crosley Road, depending on where, there will be 12-foot meandering combination bikeways or eight-foot meandering Class 1 bikeway and a five-foot sidewalk that would meander, or Class 2 bicycle path in the street. And I think that gives Mr. Noya the options that he was looking for. There's some places where we might have to come off of a Class 1 bikeway, go into the street to go around some drainage facilities because of grades, and then come back up on the, on the Class 1 bikeway. So because it hasn't been fully engineered, the Planning Commission wanted to give a lot of flexibility. The staff's position all the way along here is on Crosley and Mesquite, we should have resort-oriented bikeways, which should be, you know, off the street. We went through this in detail with the Planning Commission. I think I've diagrammed the conditions of approval multiple times to try to make sure they're right. I think they are. But again, if, if we have to adjust them, we can do that with the commission. With regards to the conditions of approval on this particular map, I believe all the conditions are accurate in your packet. On the next item, which is a parcel map affiliated, another public hearing, we have some revised conditions in the handout. But, so I think we're okay there. And with regards to the Mid Valley Parkway reimbursement, Dave Barakian, Public Works Director, would like to address that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I truly believe that that condition is going to be going away. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, or last meeting, council approved a, a method of, to SEVAG, that letter was sent in order to comply with some action that council took in 1994. Yesterday, I received correspondence from SEVAG that staff is supporting that action. It's going to go through the SEVAG committee process, and if executive committee approves it, then this condition would go away. As I explained to Mr. Noya, however, he left the condition in pending that action by SEVAG, but I fully expect that the committees will approve it, and therefore, there will be no more need for it.
Mr. Evans? If you could address the issue of phasing for me, please, originally and where we are now?
Yeah, the, the original phasing of the project, when the council looked at it, really, and I think Mr. Noya touched on it in his testimony, he had a person or entity under contract to build a golf course and a hotel as Phase 1. As the council has experienced with many projects, financing hotels and golf courses are the most difficult. So the Planning Commission removed all requirements for project phasing and basically said, "We're going to have to work with the market forces on that." The project applicant is proposing to build an office building in Phase 1 to start that portion in the southwest quadrant. And if you'd like, I can show you, you know, where Phase 1 is. It's subject to the next public hearing that you have, your next item on the agenda, so we can cover that then.
That sounds good. Are there any other questions, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Olden.
Mr. Mills?
Doug, if the, regarding the, the Mid Valley reimbursement fee, if, if we, if there's a potential that that fee will be removed, I would, it seems, it seems to me that, that we could include a condition regarding that specific item, that if it is not removed, that we, that it is subject to review at a later date? Is that acceptable to, to the way, or do you, you think that's an acceptable way to, to handle that situation?
A condition to the condition?
Yeah, a condition to the condition, as Ms. Reller Spurgeon said.
Yeah, the, the condition already has a contingency that basically says if SEVAG agrees the city's proposal, that the condition goes away. If, what I'm hearing, your suggestion is, instead of deleting the condition completely, which is what the developer would prefer, we would put a provision in that says, if SEVAG does not approve the city's program, that the city council will review the appropriateness of this condition
Right.
at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. That's, that's correct. Okay.
And then, I wonder if, if, if Mr. Russe could form, could come forward and explain to, to the three of us what a passionate, yet not too experienced developer is? You don't have to do that, Marvin.
We have a pitcher in the dictionary.
No. That, that was, that, I would, on a, on a, on a serious note, I would, I would like to, to, to thank Mr. Noya for having the foresight and the insight to look at area town as a whole and not as one specific project, as I know how it started out, and I know with the advice of, of Mr. Evans' input early, that we now have a project that really resolves a major portion of our, our town and becomes a, becomes an enhancement to not just a corner, but, but to an area. It will create an entire area which will spawn a lot of other things in that, in this area. And it's, it's, it's a great project. I think it has only gotten better. I'd also like to commend Mr. Noya. I'd also like to commend Mr. Noya for having the good sense to hire very good consultants, because these guys have done a tremendous job. And the entrance to the hotel now, phenomenal. The way you enter that project, and the view, and the first appearance, and the way you experience the project, incredible. So, I think it is a masterpiece of a project. There are a little few little things that I would have done differently, that I liked in the first plan, but they are not worth mentioning, based on the overall effect. But I would like to move the resolution with that revision to the... And I don't know what condition that was, Doug, but that we add a...
Five.
Five? We add a note, or a sentence, saying that if the fee is not waived by SEVAG, that the City Council, Planning Commission City Council, would review it at a later date.
And that's both resolutions?
Yes, yes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Mills, and seconded by Councilmember Reller Spurgeon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes unanimously, and two absent. We will now move to our next public hearing, which is item number seven, and still a part of the same project, Indian Oasis Resort. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, again, I would return this over to Doug and Mr. Noya.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Mr. Noya did ask me at the beginning of this process to make sure that he got more than three minutes, or five minutes, and one time to speak. So, because we have three public hearings involving his project, he does get 15 minutes tonight. I'd just like to make sure that he acknowledges we gave him his airtime. This is a specific project that is a piece of the overall master plan, and let me show you that, as opposed to going through the report. There is one change in the conditions of approval that I would like to make, and it was one that was recommended by the Commission on page 7C7, in your original packet. And 7C9, there's a strikeout regarding the Class 2 bikeway, and the Planning Commission would like you to leave the "or" and the strikeout in. So, we will make that change, if the council's comfortable with that. We should have picked that up in the last-minute edits, and this issue was resolved last Wednesday, and we were producing reports before the Commission meeting, so we didn't get a chance to fix this one. So we'd like to make those changes. And then also, in the packet of materials we submitted to you tonight, the last item, it was listed as 7C34. That's the revised conditions with regards to the tentative parcel map, and we'd like those incorporated into this. They're referenced as conditions for the parcel map and revised. But let me show you the project and the office building. The item before the council tonight is the approval of a parcel map only. It's basically a parcel map for the property on the southwest corner of Mesquite Avenue and Crosley. It's a series of parcels for buildings that would be built to implement the master plan that you've already seen. The first development would be in the far westerly edge, really at San Luis Rey, and that's where the first office building would go in. So the item before the council really is the parcel map. In your packet, we talked about a minor revision to the phasing program and site plan. You've already approved that in the preceding item. We put this on as a separate one, just in case we had to do more work on the overall master plan, we would be able to recommend to you tonight, go forward with this one. That's why it's a separate public hearing, and a little bit out of normal procedure. Normally, we try to bunch everything up for one public hearing. The overall site plan is shown for the project that would be Phase 1. At San Luis Rey, you would have the main entry driveway. You basically have a parking facility out front. The office building, this is the landscape plan that the Planning Commission approved. And I think the most important feature of this is the building actually has parking underneath it, in addition to surface and at-grade parking. You can take a look at the underground parking facility that's underneath the building. The building design. And again, this is the quadrant. Basically, the parcel map basically works around these particular parcels. The Phase 1 parcel is here. You'd have a driveway at this location that would be a shared driveway. Eventually, additional driveways on the roadways adjacent, with the golf on the back. And the design of the building is shown here, with basically the front of the building on the north side, and rendered in perspective, the building is shown here. And the idea for this building is to be different than the resort, to have a very strong corporate office identity. It's designed by the same architect that did the project on Ramon Road and Farrell, right opposite of the high school. You know, they specialize in professional office buildings, and that housed corporate clients in the project they did at the previous location in town, was well-received in the market. This project is really... The building is not part of your action tonight. That's already been approved by the Planning Commission. What's before the council tonight is this little bitty map. That completes my report.
There are no questions, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Evans, when you had us go back and revise the conditions regarding the bike path, those three conditions are, or will be, "or," "or," and "or." What is your interpretation of "or"? And who decides what "or" is?
The applicant's preference is the "or" is the decision of the applicant. The final detailed Plan Development District has to come back to the Planning Commission, so they ultimately look at it. In front of the corporate office building, the applicant's intent is to have a sidewalk on-site along Mesquite Avenue, and then have a Class 2 bikeway in the street, as opposed to having a meandering bikeway in that frontage. I think there were a couple of things. One, they felt that they wanted the landscape, you know, in front of the parking lot, to really soften the parking and the project. And they felt that, adjacent to the corporate facility, that there would not be any parking allowed in Mesquite, and there's plenty of room for people to ride. The debate that I've had with the applicant has been, if this is all one project, would it look better, and could it function better if you had that larger bike path behind the curb, and envisioned people walking from the offices, three abreast, over to the resort for lunch or dinner, you know, and go back and forth? The applicant is just adamant, at this point, he believes that the sidewalk is appropriate, and the bikeway in the street. Relative to the other areas and other streets, I think we have pretty much concurrence with the applicant on where the meandering bikeways will be, and meandering sidewalks, and I think we'll get those in most locations, if not all.
So, the answer to the question is, the "or" is as determined by the Planning Commission?
At the end of the day, the Planning Commission approves the final plans.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward. You'll have five minutes. Good evening, and welcome.
My very experienced developer friend behind me, again, Marvin Ruse with Monero Smith and Associates, he has a lot more experience now than we started this, and I think he's taught us all a lot of lessons, and he's... This is an amazing project, and we're all proud to be part of it. I'd point out that the conditions of approval that are outlined, starting on page 7C4, our understanding is that 7C4 through 7C33 are all gone. What we did with this project was to create a master set of conditions that are established in the Plan Development District. And then the 7C34 are the specific conditions for the parcel map, so that these other conditions no longer... These were the ones that we got rid of, that were basically down to one page of conditions. Isn't that beautiful and concise? Along with, of course, the other, you know, 8 million pages of conditions that we already have. So, we're trying not to repeat those over and over again. As we've seen, there's the ability to start losing language, changing language, creating nuance, from phase to phase to phase. Again, I think we're here to support the Planning Commission. Recommendation on this parcel map facilitates the Phase 1 development, and here to answer any questions, and look for your approval. Thank you.
And thank you. Eric?
Last time. Ernest Noya, 429 East Tuckwitz Canyon Way. This is my conditions book, just so if you're worried there's not enough conditions, this is my conditions book. So, there's plenty of conditions, and I know every one. And I will tell you that I have learned a lot. And at this point, I will say that we had our differences of opinion, and, you know, no one raised their voice but me, and we all got along. At the end of the day, I think you're right, Chris, and I appreciate those comments. We have a good project. Now, I'm trying to get through you guys, through this procedure, so that we can go through the next environmental challenge procedure, so we can go through the BIA final procedure, so I can go get the money and get something built. But I wanted you to show the office building, because I'm proud of that office building, because office buildings are tough to come by. And that building, when you walk into it, it's a... And I will say, design review helped make it a better building. When you walk in, it's full glass, all the way to the ceiling, and you look through at the golf course and the southern mountain view from the lobby. And we have a little... A pretty big lobby. But we'll try to... My architects are gonna... And they work as a team, both these guys and the WATNG. And they're gonna try to use that rock as a common element that ties the entire project, and all the monuments, signing, and everything together. I haven't come here yet to tell you how I want to change all your sign ordinances. That's the next time around. But I will be back. And I didn't tell you also about the street signs, that I don't want to put the same old street signs when I change the dinosaur. I want to change the whole look of the neighborhood. So... But we'll deal with those minor things later. I do feel comfortable. I feel that we've come to compromises. I got... I know bike paths, that's the most important thing to me in my life now. I bought two or three bikes, because I'm gonna ride up and down this site, and Doug and I are gonna do it together. But with all joking aside, it's been a long haul, and I have learned a lot. I've basically tapped my bank account out, my wife's and my kid's here, and he doesn't know how to give him an IOU for that statement, for his statement tonight. But on a whole, I think we're there. I'm going, just for your own information, I'm going to Florida in 14 days, to the Time Share Investment Conference, to meet with the major players that do hotels and golf courses. So, I wanted to go, and they worked very hard to get me there, through, with this council. Of course, I'm gonna, you know, reprimand the guys that aren't here, because I wanted you, who saw it first, to approve it. And now I want to go there with entitlements in hand, maybe a lawsuit, too, but entitlements as well, and then we're gonna hopefully get this thing going. But that building's getting built, and we're breaking ground in January. I don't have any tenants, so if you know anybody who needs anything over the air, please call. Thank you. Any questions, I'm here.
If there anyone else would like to speak in the public hearing? If not, then we will close the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yes. If I could just clarify a couple of items, because as you know, we've been working on documents right up to about 5 o'clock today. On the resolution for this item, item 7C3, we are gonna change the... Now, therefore, there will only be an Exhibit A. And the Exhibit A is the last exhibit that is in the packet we handed out, that Mr. Ruse referred to. All of the conditions for the master plan development district applies, and the golf and the bikeways are correct there. And then, these only apply in addition to the parcel map, to make it easier. So, those changes we'll make in the record, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, move the resolution.
Moved by Councilmember Mills?
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Reller Spurgeon. Are there any comments? I'd just like to say, a while back, I had the opportunity to meet with Ernie and Carolyn, and they were just talking about a concept, but how far that concept has come. And I'm glad that it's in Palm Springs.
Yes.
Thank you. Then, at this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Neopos? It passes unanimously, and we have two absent. And now, we will move to item number eight, Palm Canyon Townhomes LLC. Staff report, please, for this public hearing.
This is for 16 condominiums located in the South Palm Canyon area. And again, I'd like to call on Doug, and then we'll give him a break. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a companion item to your first, or second, public hearing tonight. The council has amended the general plan to designate the property Residential Lo 6. This is a very narrow sliver, almost impossible piece of property to develop. I've worked probably on eight projects on this property, and this developer has probably come up with a plan that probably works as well as any, as we've seen, and certainly fits the condominium, or the small lot patio home-type market that we're looking at. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the tentative tract map for condominium purpose, 16 units. The Planning Commission also approved the architectural approval case. That approval was final with the Planning Commission, so the item before you tonight is just the tentative tract map. That particular project complies with the zoning criteria for the zoning that exists on the property today. With regards to one of the key issues in the project summary, had to do with undergrounding of utilities. I had a brief moment to talk to the applicant late this afternoon. We were right in the middle of finishing the Noya documents, so I indicated that they really need to raise some concerns relative to undergrounding of utilities this evening, if they'd like to address some issues there. But I'll point out what the issue is, and how we're gonna try to resolve that, at least in the staff report. Won't go through the staff report, I prefer to just give you a quick update of the map, and show you that exciting subdivision map, and then also show you the approval that was granted by the Commission. The proposed map is a subdivision map for the 16 condominium units. It basically shows the outline of the property, where the units would be, and basically shows you the improvements. The utility undergrounding issue, and I'm not sure I can see every utility line on this map, but basically, there's a utility line along the back of the property that goes up and over the ridge, the little knoll that's up with the ridge development over here, and continues on over here to Vista Canyon. and continues on over here to Vista Canyon. The applicant's going to underground to the nearest off-site pole along here. Then there's a pole right here on the subject property. And the way the conditions are worded, they would then underground to across the street and put a pole in. And the idea of doing the pole there is, we really don't know where the Canyon Hotel is going to want to take their utility service. And if they went to the next off-site pole, which is the way the code reads, they'd run it way down South Palm Canyon Drive, and that may not be where that hotel ultimately needs their utility dropped. So the way the conditions are read, they would underground across the street, but not to the next off-site pole. In addition, the next off-site pole is a long ways away. So from a cost standpoint, it made more sense to put it in here. The applicant may want to address the council on that. And with utility undergrounding, it's a real challenge because it's expensive. So as we go through the final design of the project, we'll continue to work with the applicant on how we might underground those utilities. With regards to the actual project that the commission reviewed. The project has a site plan that features the units along the back property line, two units that step up the hillside. This pool on the hillside has been deleted. And then you have three units along here with one primary driveway that services the project, a secondary driveway in this location, contemporary design. And as you can see, they took photographs of the actual scaled model that they used with design review, as well as the planning commission. A couple of the units in here start stepping up the hillside, shown here. And in cross-section, what we've tried to do is not have anything break that ridge line. So the units come up to this location. There's a little bit of hillside cut back in here, but they won't break the ridge line. As you come down Palm Canyon Drive, you come along the hillside, this unit will be visible because of the way the slope works, but I don't think it will be overwhelming. The planning commission looked at this project, and it went through a very extensive review process on details and approved it. That completes our report. Mr. Mayor? It'd be one pool per unit, I believe, 16. Actually, there's one unit that, at this point, doesn't have a pool. It'd be this unit down in here. But at the end of the day, there'll probably be a pool there.
Any questions on the staff report?
This is just for a track map, isn't it?
That is correct.
Then we will open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this issue, Item Number Eight, the Palm Canyon Town Homes. Please come forward. Good evening and welcome. Please give your name to the clerk.
My name is David Hilliard. I'm with Palm Canyon Town Homes, and I'd like to address the council on our project. As staff, as Doug said, it's a 16-unit townhome project. It's patio home design. We tried to do something that is consistent with the density of the other projects surrounding us. There will be pools for each of the units. I guess there was some question about that. Each of the units is designated to have its own small swimming pool. There's a driveway down the middle with individual garage access off of the driveway and entries off of the driveway. The one issue that I guess was most discussed at planning was the issue of the undergrounding of the utilities. Will not only be undergrounding the utilities from our site, but also the site to the north of ours. And so that would bring -- our site is approximately 600 feet, 660 feet of frontage along Palm Canyon. The site to the north is about 300 feet, so about 990 feet of undergrounding of utilities. And we had requested to maintain the southerlymost power pole to avoid going the additional 400 feet to the next southerly pole. Rationale for that is, not only are we doing the capacity for our project, but also capacity, we're providing conduit capacity for all of the development to the south of us. In other words, the source of the power is from the north going to the south. And so we're bringing far more in terms of capacity from the north, undergrounding it all the way through our property, and we had hoped to be able to maintain the southerlymost power pole. We have what we believe is an acceptable solution. We haven't -- we have not spoken, or we have not gotten comment back from Southern California Edison yet on the potential for new power pole across the street. However, we have broached that with them and asked them to respond. Ideally, obviously, we would like to maintain the existing southerlymost power pole. However, you know, we have reached an agreement with the planning commission, which is reflected in the staff report. And, you know, we'll work with staff to make sure that the undergrounding is met in accordance with the approval. Otherwise, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is anyone else would like to speak in the public hearing? So please come forward at this time. If not, then we will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Doug, a quick question. The power pole, the southerly power pole that you mentioned across the street, assuming that's on the future site of the Canyon Hotel, the ACDA property. Have you discussed with them that location of that pole there at this time?
No, we have not talked to the Development Authority about the location of that pole. The thought was that they're going to have to underground all of their utilities and to drop it at the nearest point on the corner would probably be the best hinge point, not knowing how they would want to bring it in. They might go down Murray Canyon and into the hotel. They might go down South Palm. That gives them hinge points. If we implemented the ordinance exactly as it's written, we would underground it 400 feet down South Palm Canyon Drive to that next pole. And we thought that was an unfair burden on this developer. And we may end up putting the thing in the wrong place, or maybe a little bit wrong size. If you leave it where the applicant would like, across the street, then we would ask the Development Authority to underground across the street. And it's really a question of who's first and who gets the obligation to cut across. You could, in theory, ask, if you're looking at ways to maybe soften the cost, is to put a reimbursement in here, that if we could get the Development Authority to reimburse, they would pay for half of the crossing, they might argue they wouldn't have to. You know, because we can't condition their project underground, you know, until they propose it.
Right. And you were headed where I was headed. If we could perhaps, on behalf of the applicant, approach the ACDA, let them know, number one, that this is what we're looking at for a pole location, and number two, see if there's any possibility for a reimbursement agreement for that street crossing. And with that, I'd move the resolution.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilmember Mills, seconded by Councilmember Reller Spurgeon. Are there any other questions? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Neopose? Passes two, I mean, three, and two absent. Counsel, comment, announcement, interagency report. I have a few things. I attended the program here at City Hall that was coordinated by the city manager, the Back-to-Black Program, where staff made recommendations to assist us in becoming more financially solvent as a city. And there were some excellent, excellent recommendations, and I'm looking forward to, at some point, having the recipients, or some or all, whichever you choose, to make those presentations here before council, or perhaps at a study session. I also attended First Friday, we haven't given a report. And First Friday, there were quite a few people out, but we didn't have that many businesses that were open. I think at some point, we need to communicate with the businesses in the area and find out, you know, what's going on. We're making an investment in First Friday. If there's some things that we need to do differently, then let's look at those. Or if it requires something different that we are not doing, I think we need to look at that in order to make the event successful. Just like to say a special congratulations to Commander McCabe and his new wife Sharon. We attended, along with the mayor and Chris, the Indian Canyon event for the cultural museum. And this past Friday, we also attended the MASH cocktail party for the Mizel Senior Center, and the mayor and Chris, they were there as well. And I had the opportunity to give the welcome to the Hispanic Film Festival, held at Desert Museum at the Annenberg Theater. And it was well-attended. But I'd like to say special congratulations to Anna Rascón and Al Vasquez, who have brought this program to the city of Palm Springs each year. But I think I'd like to see us in the future, see how we can incorporate them into either our tourism department or with our film festival, because they are, you know, out there on their own, but they bring this program to our city, and it's still, they're still trying to get it off of the ground. But I think if we work together, we can have an outstanding festival, absolutely outstanding. And I'd tell you one of the things that was interesting about the event is that how welcomed everyone felt. And that was really because of Janice Lau and what they had done at the museum itself. And there were people who commented about the event being healthier and what it was like. So I'd like to say a special thank you to her as well. Then I attended a function fundraiser for the Desert Age Project by La Damme du Soleil. It's a group of entertainers who do sort of a camp and drag program, and they've raised over a half a million dollars for the Desert Age Project. And I'd like to say, just keep up the good work. I also attended a special program for the Journey to the Hate-Free Millennium, and we saw that, I think initially through the film festival a few years ago, and they showed it at Palm Springs High School. And the gentleman whom they focused on in the feature film, who was killed in Texas when he was dragged by the three men, his daughter Renee was here, and she spoke. And it was just, it was so moving to hear how a person who could be filled with hate is filled with love and a message of unifying and forgiveness. It was truly an exceptional program, and I'd like to say a special thank you to Brent Scarpole, who is part of the foundation. And along with Kathy Kleindust and Dawn Mills, we attended the Rainbow Awards. And yesterday, the RF dedication of the new fire vehicle. So special thank you. Congratulations to our fire department, and we are well on our way and definitely in a safer environment.
Is that all you've done?
Oh, that's not half of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I attended the senior expo the last two days, kind of attended. And it was a pleasure to see Jeannie in there giving flu shots with a smile on her face. And over the years, she has, I don't know how many flu shots she has given, although none to me. It was, it was, Jeannie, I don't know what the number is, but it has to be an astronomical number. I can't think of anybody in this city that is, other than you, that's ever given anybody a flu shot.
Maybe we should look in the Guinness Book of Records or something.
But I just, I think it's, I would just like to compliment Jeannie for her years of service of giving those shots. And I know she does it with a smile every time, and people do appreciate it, even the ones that don't get the flu shots.
Thank you.
Had the mayor gotten his flu shot on Friday at MASH, he'd probably be here.
Well, I've received my shot on numerous occasions from Jeannie, definitely.
On flu shots, Ron?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, flu shots. Okay. We've already taken care of Item Number Nine. We can move to Item Number Ten, the Convention Center Phase Two Expansion, 2003 and Four Allocation Positions and Compensation Plan, Amendment Six.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this resolution that's before you, this is another one, we're burning up the city with development. This is for the Convention Center. We're adopting the same model for the Convention Center that we did for the parking structure, so we can get it done on time and under budget. What's before you is a range of resolutions. It's going to ask you to approve the plans and specs, allow us to go out to contract a bid, define the administration parameters on the construction. It's an allocated position issue and a budget amendment as well. And I'm going to ask the project manager, Al Smoot, to address these issues, and we recommend your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the items that we talked to you about a couple of weeks ago in study session that would be the beginning of the train leaving the station on this project. And there are three resolutions attached to this council report. The first would be establishing all of the various parameters for the project and approving the plans and specifications so that they may, we may begin the process of bidding out the trade contracts. The resolution would also authorize the city manager to award contracts, since we may be having as many as 60 trade contracts up to the $100,000 level. The rest would come to council. Authorize administration for change orders at 2% or a half a million dollars with regular reporting back to council, and that is a change from the original resolution. You have an amended resolution on your packet there tonight. Authorizing the construction manager to pay utility relocation bills, which we believe will not exceed $300,000 total for this project. Authorizing the use of the contingency funds to pay overtime to some trades, if necessary, to move the project along. And at the study session, we were asked to also look at some type of early completion bonuses to be built into the program. Rather than doing those in the beginning of the project, which may cause people to change their schedules so that they could get these bonuses, we would like the authority to have the bonuses, but utilize them during the construction project when we find a sub that, if we move them along quicker, will help the project. And so we've placed in here an authorization to provide up to a $25,000 bonus if the team, including the city manager, agrees that it makes sense for us to move that group along. And then lastly, it would be as your project administrator. The second resolution would be an amendment to the Compensation and Classification Plan, which would establish a temporary position for construction manager, in case you would like to use me after I retire. And lastly, there is a budget amendment, which would amend the budget to the tune of $4 million, utilizing the money that's being raised by the TOT currently, so that we can have dollars in the budget until such time as we actually sell the bonds, which we're estimating will take place in the month of March. That's the council report, and be happy to try to answer any of your questions. That's the council report, and be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Counsel, are there any questions? Staff report?
Not a one.
Then I will entertain a motion.
So moved. All three of them.
All three, and I'll second all three. Any comments? Roll call.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes unanimously, and we have two absent. And we'll move to item number 11, 2003, 204 fiscal year budget amendment, banking services. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this actually comes from our finance director, Tom Knar, and I would like to thank him for this suggestion, because it is a cost-saving measure. And if he was a member of the MAPS unit, he would have been awarded a gift at the Back to Black Awards last week. But he's not, so I do want to thank him personally. What this is, this is requesting a, a budget amendment, allowing us to put 30, appropriate $30,000, but then again, it would be offset with an increase in revenue. Traditionally, we have always had to keep a minimum amount of dollars in the city's checking account. Because of the banking industry, that number keeps going up. Tom has determined that it would be more advantageous for us just to pay the fee, and instead of leaving the large amount of money in the checking account, invest that money instead of leaving it in the checking account, and we would end up with a net increase of approximately $20,000 per year. It's a, it's a revenue source, and it's a creative idea, and I would recommend that we pass this resolution. Thank you.
Questions to the staff report?
No, I'll move the resolution and thank Tom, and I've got a little gift for him if David doesn't.
I'll second it.
It is removed by Councilmember Mills, and seconded by Councilmember Roderick Spurgeon. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. And it passes unanimously, and we have two absent. We'll move to item number 12, municipal code amendment, fugitive dust master bell schedule amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What's before you, in this litany of requests and ordinances and resolutions, is for us to attain our EPA attainment status. As you know, the Coachella Valley, not Palm Springs in particular, the Coachella Valley has, is out of attainment on their dust control PM 10. And these are measures that the entire valley has been working on through SEVAG, that have come up with measures in terms of how we're going to inspect, how we're going to take care of violations, and change in our ordinance to reflect those violations and those procedures. This will be approved by every city in the valley, and that's what's before you this evening. Now, Mr. Barackian, who has traditionally been our dust czar, is here, and he can address any specific questions that you might have. Thank you.
I pretty much said it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I have a few. The, David, is, is it my understanding, then, that, that this ordinance is, or is to be, or has it, has it been adopted by all the cities that are, that are listening here?
It's been adopted by some of the cities. I'm, I'm not sure of all of them, but the intent is that all of them are going to adopt it. I know India already, Indian Wells already has.
Are they, are there, is there any subject, I mean, are there any items that are subject to negotiation, or is it, you, this is the way it is, or, or you don't adopt it?
There was a model ordinance that was prepared by AQMD and distributed to the cities, and it was basically a line below which the cities could not go. You could be stricter, but you, you couldn't give less, basically.
And according to what, the way I read this, there are some items where we were stricter than the AQMD model.
Not, not really.
If, it, well, unless I misread something, which is possible, the, the item I'm referring to specifically is the item that says the threshold requiring a 2,000 per acre deposit to ensure adequate control of dust is lowered from one acre to 5,000 square feet. I thought one acre was, was the AQMD recommendation, and the 5,000 square feet was what was...
No, actually, one acre is what is in our current ordinance. 5,000 square feet is what is in the model ordinance from AQMD, and what we are proposing to have in our new ordinance.
Okay. And, and my, my concern about that particular issue is that, that essentially means every project, single-family residences, no matter what, are going to be paying this $2,000 deposit.
Pro-rated 2,000 per acre, so if you have 5,000 square feet, it's at that rate, not $2,000.
Okay, so it doesn't say prorated, though.
Well, the ordinance does. I believe at the rate of 2,000 per acre.
I don't remember. Do you remember what's, there it is, number seven, on 12A6. I don't see any reference to prorating. And if it is prorating, then I'm okay with that.
Yes, it, it definitely is. It's at the rate of 2,000 acre. What you're looking at is the MOU, I believe, 12A6.
Yes, I am. But is, so you're, you're confident, David, that somewhere in here, it is a prorate of that 2,000?
Absolutely. That's how it was written.
All right, because I just thought that was way out of line.
Yes, it was, and that's why, in, in the committees, that was, that specifically was decided that that would be at that rate, not at that amount.
12D5.
See, yes, at a rate.
12D5, right here, it says, in such pond, or...
Do we have any idea what the cost will be for the training course that all the staff will have to go through?
There isn't any dollar cost that, that they charge you. The, the cost is simply that you're there for four hours.
Okay, so four-hour course?
Yes.
After, there's a 100 for the first offense, 200 for second, and then 500 for each additional violation, plus a misdemeanor. What's, what's the maximum on the misdemeanor that, that we can do for a violation of this nature?
I believe, I believe that, let's see, subject to a fine of not more than $1,000 and/or imprisonment for no more than six months.
And we can't issue any more verbal warnings?
That's true. That was, that was part of the, the draft ordinance, the model ordinance by AQMD, and that was a specific requirement by the personnel at EPA, as, as their way of showing that, that the valleys, cities are going to be serious about this, and gave them the, the assurance that we, we're going to do everything we can to try and get the Coachella Valley back in, into attainment status.
Is there a cer, certain threshold, that if everyone complies with this, that a certain reduction level that they're, we're expected to be at, at a certain time?
Well, basically, by 2006, the expectation is that below, that the levels, and again, the, the monitoring station in Palm Springs has never been out of attainment, but it's the, the one down valley that has been. The, the intent is that by 2006, the length of the extension granted in, by EPA, that the, the levels will be below the 50 micrograms per meter.
Okay, thank you. And any other questions?
Mr. Barackian, one of the other requirements is that the, the cities are required to pave any unpaved roads, essentially, to make a long story short. Do we have any instances where we're going to have to do that?
Well, currently, we don't have any with 150 vehicles a day on them, but we do have some with, with 20. So we will be required to go out and sign them for speed and so forth.
Okay. I think, I think it's, it's important to, to note how important this, this, this item is, and that although Palm Springs area, as Mr. Barackian noted, we've, we've been where we need to be, it's really a valley-wide issue. And, and in the case of Palm Springs, it helps being upwind, you know, so the, I think there are some very serious issues here. And this is something we definitely have to do, and I'm, to that end, I'll move the minute orders, both of them, and also move the ordinance for introduction and first reading. And I'd like to hear, no, I'll wave the text.
Second.
Madam, do we have to take this, a separate voice vote for the minute orders?
If, if you're going to have a unanimous vote on waiving full texts, then I can do all at one time. If you're going to have separate...
I think we'll be, okay.
Okay, so...
All right, roll call.
Okay, this would be an ordinance of the city of Palm Springs, California, repealing existing, existing Chapter 8.50 in its entirety, and adding Chapter 8.50 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code relating to fugitive dust control. Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Additional legislative items?
There are none, sir.
Added starters?
There are none.
Reports and requests. Okay, council reports or requests? I have a, yeah, I'm coming. The issue that was raised this, this evening by Mr. Sweetech from the Riviera about putting this, the item of the Senior Softball World Series on the agenda. And some time ago, we were talking about the, the retirement of our director of the airport, and I know that we have, we're conducting a search. I'd like an, an update on that, so we know where we're standing, because it's not much longer before he's going to be leaving us, and I'd like to know where we are in that Also, we had a request at one point from the resident of Park Andreas regarding Bogart Trail, if we could see when we could agendize that item. And, and I have a question. Do we have an ordinance that deals with farm animals?
I think there are some provisions in the municipal code. I seem to remember an enforcement action, we took a while ago, but I couldn't tell exactly what they are at the moment.
If, if we could get some information on that, I, I've received some requests here of late about roosters and goats, and, I mean, lovely animals, but they seem to be creating some disturbance for neighbors. Just like to know where we stand in terms of our ordinances in addressing these issues. Treasures report. As of August 13th, 2003, is filed? Okay, thank you. Any public reports or requests? Staff reports or requests? Our next regular meeting will be November 5th at 7:00 PM. Our next study session will be October 22nd and 29th at 7:00 PM, all preceded by a 5:30 PM closed session. Remember that November 4th, there's an election. Please remember to vote. Good night, everyone. We'll call this meeting adjourned.